On behalf of the Silver City Town Council, I'm calling this a session of the work session of the council to order. And I'd like to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and following that, the salute to the New Mexico State Flag. I salute the flag.
I salute the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under one God, indivisible, with its justice for all.
I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zeus symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures. I'd like to welcome everyone here to this work session. I'd like to acknowledge that we have our town manager, Alex Brown, with us tonight. We have our town attorney, Mr. Credit, Jackie O'Leary, the Assistant Town Manager, Alfred Sidia, the City Clerk, and Randy Hernandez, the Assistant Town Manager and Community Development Director. Oops, I gave you a promotion, Mr. Hernandez. That used to be the case, but now you're the Operations Manager. Thank you. I'd like to also acknowledge that we have Code Enforcement Officer Tony with us tonight and substituting for Chief Potillo will be Officer Howdy. I'd like to welcome members of the press and public that might be here. The first item on the agenda is approval of the work session agenda. Do I hear a motion? Councilor Canna?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve of the work session agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilor Prince?
Second the motion is stated.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next is public input and no one signed up, so we'll move over to discussion. Before we do that, I'd like to just inform you that as of a little while ago, 1,194 people had voted early. Okay, so this discussion centers around the rules of procedure for governing bodies. So this will be the work session, so we can discuss it. And potentially, we could vote on it at our next council meeting. Is that fine with everybody? Okay, so who would like to start off the discussion? Councilor Snyder, you're the one that's initiated this.
Well, this government body resolution is a template basically from the municipal league. And I guess the first thing we need to decide is, is this something we want to do or do we want to just automatically go to Robert's Rules of Order and go from there? This has some real advantages because it does specify dates and times and stuff and helps out in that thing and defaults to Robert's Rules of Order.
Well, I brought a copy of the latest edition of Robert's Rules of Order, 700-plus pages. I don't know if anyone's delved into that or not, but to my way of thinking, it's much more information than we need.
Right, right.
And I think what we need is just what's going to fit the needs of the council. So, Councilor Prince?
My initial impression from item one that we have in the rules of procedure for governing bodies, this feels like a really solid framework when we're comparing this to the other items in the packet for governing procedures for the city of Rio Rancho. And I can't remember if it was Corrales or Red River and, yes, Corrales, Rio Rancho, and Red River for the rest of them. You know, those ones seem to expand and have quite a bit of detail in them. And I would argue that that level of detail in the living document, we can work on and amend. The framework from the municipal league for the rules of procedure for governing bodies addresses most all of my concerns, except for I need a little bit of clarity on consent calendar for what the process is for elected officials to have items added to the agenda. I can understand if there are concerns that come up through legal review where a counselor might want to have an agenda item that would cause conflict or get the city in hot water. But then if they were to propose it at a meeting to be added to a future agenda and they're able to get a second on that, would that be enough then to include an agenda item? Basically, if there are going to be contentious issues that come up that a town counselor wishes to bring to meeting, however, town management chair and legal review declines to include that on the agenda, what is the process if that counselor wishes to bring it forward at a council meeting?
Councilor Canna?
Well, the first thing that comes to mind is if the lawyer tells you we're not supposed to discuss it in public, there's a reason for that. So we probably don't want to put it on the agenda after we've been told specifically by legal that it needs to either be discussed in executive session or isn't part of the council's purview. It may be something the town manager has to do it. So to me, the idea of putting something on the agenda after being told specifically that it's not a good idea legally is a bad idea. I mean, that's why we employ a lawyer, to make sure that we don't talk about things in public that can get us sued. Correct?
I guess I'm not exactly following what we're suggesting and where it would be inserted in this document.
Mayor Linder?
Councilor Prince?
I'm taking a look on Rules of Procedure for Governing Bodies, I believe the third page, Article Two Procedures. Item 2.3, Order of Business. If I may read it out, "The order of business of the governing body shall be conducted in the following order, provided however that the presiding officer may during a meeting rearrange items on the agenda to conduct the business before the governing body more efficiently." Underneath Public Forum and Consent Calendar, "The consent calendar is approved by a single motion. Any member of the governing body may request an item to be withdrawn from the consent calendar without discussion or vote." That does not intend that a counselor may add an item.
No, just remove.
Mayor Linder? Councilor Snyder?
I was wondering if under this order of business, if we just want to continue on and insert our current method for the agenda, you know, with the call to order changes to agenda? Or do we want to actually convert to what is suggested here?
Have any of you observed other meetings of other councils that use a consent agenda? Because it's actually quite helpful to do that.
Is it?
Yeah, I would suggest, the one I've watched is Solon Park, and they use a consent agenda and it works quite well. And they do have people that remove things if they do want to discuss them and it works just fine. But, and they have all theirs online, so you can go back and look.
If you could just fill me in, actually, how a consent?
Consent agenda is things that you're going to do all the time.
Minutes.
You know, like, yeah, minutes, things like that. It's not for anything that really involves debate. Debate is always, you know, something that's going to, that you already know is going to be debated stays off the consent agenda. It's things that are done routinely. Proclamation, things like that can be on there as well if you don't want to read them.
Well, it kind of begs the question, is there anything with the way our current agenda is set up that anyone doesn't like?
Well, Mayor, first of all, I would just, I would like to hear from Counselor Snyder why he is wanting to propose this. Help me understand what you're...
Well, it was brought to our attention that the town council does not have a rules of procedure. And we have in the past defaulted to Robert's Rules of Procedure, but we've never made it official that we are following Robert's Rules of Procedure. This is a little bit more condensed and also defaults to Robert Rules of Procedure if it's not covered here. And so what this would do would have the town council have some sort of formal adoption of a procedure that we could pass on to the next councils and stuff. And further back in here, it can be amended. There's a spot in there that says it can be amended if it's not working out.
Because currently, we don't have anything in place right now, right?
That's my understanding.
Okay. So in all my years that I've attended council meetings or had to, when I was an employee with the town of Silver City, having to come and make some presentations to the council and mayor at the time, and even watching council meetings at home or in the audience, I've never seen, well, I've seen a couple of times where there has been some confusion, there has been where a council member or somebody didn't quite understand everything or what was being proposed, whatever, and somehow they managed to work together. There wasn't, I guess my fear is if we're tied down to something like Robert's Rules, that that may be used to criticize the other council for not perhaps understanding or misunderstood the vote. And I would, in the past, I've seen where council members have been cordial to one another and taken the time to, let me make sure that you understand what you're voting for. And I've never seen, I've never seen that occur in all the years that I've attended. And the Robert's Rules of Order, how many pages did you say that was, Mayor?
I think about six something or close to 700.
You know, if anybody knows me, I'm a pretty simple kind of guy. I cannot see myself, what happens, are we going to refer to the book whenever we have an issue? Are we going to have to take a timeout and, I mean, we have counsel here to advise us?
Let me just read something quickly here that kind of exemplifies what my concern about using a document like this. This pertains to 6.23, incidental main motions corresponding to incidental motions. Counterparts of some of the incidental motions may occur as incidental main motions. For example, a standing rule can be suspended for the duration of a session. And a motion for such suppression made when no business is pending is an incidental main motion. Similarly, a motion prescribing how nominations shall be made is an incidental main motion if it is moved while no election is pending. See, I just don't think we want to get involved in that kind of language. Councilor Canna?
One of the things I like about this template is under 1.4 adopted rules, it says, "Any matter not covered by these rules shall be governed by the decision of the presiding officer applying Robert's Rules of Order." So that means, you know, we do this first and then if this doesn't work, then we pull out the book, which I think is probably a little bit simpler than having to be straight to the book.
Councilor Prince?
And if I just may, governing bodies and differences of opinions are challenging and when people have hard beliefs or have ultimatums, having a deliberative process in place so that opinions and ideas, all of them get a chance to have their time. And then should that not be convincing underneath these procedures, then we've exhausted the best practices towards what is common inside of our nonprofit sector. I checked with the Community Foundation today and they operate by Robert's Rules of Order. They also offer workshops that they're going to be having in the new year for nonprofit groups to also be able to handle their board discussions. And it's, I believe, the most common form of parliamentary procedure across all bodies. So it's knowledge that we get trained with. We have local resources and have cross-knowledge available with other institutions as well as with the municipal league. I believe they also encourage Robert's Rules as far as parliamentary procedure as a starting framework. And so I think this is a very common standard and, yeah, for a body that doesn't have any parliamentary procedure, this, like I mentioned, it seems like a really good framework so far.
Well, I looked over the copies that's, I'm not sure who provided, Rio Rancho and Corrales and Red River. And like I said, I'm pretty simple. The Red River was really easy to understand and simple and to the point. I did like the Red, uh...
Red River?
Rio Rancho. It was the Red River I liked because it was simple, but I also liked the Rio Rancho, what they have in their place, you know?
Councilor Canna?
Something that Rio Rancho has in theirs that I want to discuss, including even if we go with the template and just fill in the blanks where they have it, is that they include a public decorum. And I think that's become important because we've had...
Which one are you?
Page eight of Rio Rancho's at the bottom. It starts with, and then it's on page nine. It has public decorum, and I think that's important because we've had some public outbursts lately and I think we need to have some kind of a framework for dealing with those. Page eight of the Rio Rancho one.
I had kind of looked at it as well. Under decorum in this particular document, under 3.3, it says, "Members of the governing body," and I thought we could also put it, "and/or public input," shall confine their remarks to question under discussion or debate, avoiding personal references or attacks on fellow members.
I think public decorum needs to be a separate thing because there's six things under public decorum on page eight, and then there's a whole different thing for council responsibilities and decorum.
Councilor Snyder, does this document come from the state municipal league?
I believe it does, yes.
I kind of think this is a good starting point for us. I've been to a lot of council meetings too, and I think, to me, the main thing about council meetings is that you have a council that works together. No one has a hidden agenda that they want to spring on the council during the council meeting. If there's an amendment, everybody knows what the amendment is going to be before the council meeting. We all get these agendas, how many days, three or four days, Alfred, before the meeting? That's plenty enough time to study it. And if we want to make an amendment, craft the amendment, we can use the town attorney for that? Yeah.
I worry that that disturbs the public process that we're committed to and we're sworn to. For legislation as determined by an elected governing body, amendments and the process due to the Open Meetings Act, typically there's only one, maybe two sponsors with a board of our size. And should any counselor, not a part of the proposing side, have conditions while we need to move on this legislation, start addressing community needs, public needs, this provides a framework to be able to come up with those compromises so that we don't have to wait sometimes months on critical issues that might need to be moved on within a week or two.
The other thing on amendments, I think during debate, things can come up to a light. And at that point, it may need to be amended, but you did not know that until we actually had a debate. And I think if we need to write it down at that time and pass it, I think we could do that.
And presently, I'm not aware of any procedure we have for what exists in Robert's Rules for tabling. I mean, if it turns out there's far too many changes that need to occur and we will not have the time to do so in a meeting, this does create a clean, clear process for tabling and revisiting that I think solves those issues just in case too much needs to change at once too. So as long as I think folks understand both sides of that for making amendments as well as tabling.
First of all, just for everyone's knowledge, you don't table because if you table, it's gone forever after the end of the meeting. You're going to postpone something if you need to. Second of all, what I think needs to be discussed instead of having amendments, I agree with you about the amendments in writing, both of you. But what I would like to see is something in this that says that you do not change the original motion that's supposed to be on the agenda, you add amendments after. Because that's what happened the last time. The agenda item got changed and that led to chaos. Had it been done correctly and the agenda item been moved and seconded and then the amendment had been asked for, then that amendment would have been voted on and it would have gone a lot smoother than what happened. So I think that the rule that needs to be in here is that the original agenda item is moved on or not moved on, but if it's moved on, then you can add an amendment. But I agree that an amendment might come to your head in the middle of what you're listening to and now you didn't put it in writing, so now you can't even bring it up. That's not going to work. So...
Yeah, and I understand what you say about changing a motion, it's better to amend.
Yeah, I think that would make it all work well.
I would agree on that. I think one of the ideas that's getting danced around is what I've heard referred to as rules lawyering, you know, where folks will abuse process and procedure to kind of try to sneak things in or to adjust things so that it isn't clear and it isn't transparent. That's not the goal, I think, of moving to a Robert's Rules system. And I'm in agreement that I think amending and having a clear amendment to an already presented motion so that then the vote that happens will be written out clearly. And the question I would ask then for the writing out of the amendment, that would then be something that we would expect the town clerk then to read out with what the new motion or the motion that we have with the amendment in it? And that we would have the vote on that and that would pass?
Well, Robert's Rules of Order is you vote on the amendment first and then you go back to the original motion. So, yeah. So if you just do it in that or you vote on the amendment first and then go back to the main motion.
Sounds good.
Can I get back to Counselor Canna's question about public decorum? You're thinking of putting that whole section F?
Yes.
Into, the whole section F in?
Yeah, I think the whole thing is important.
And?
And may we read that section out just to cover all of the points on it, just as it's got a lot of free speech concerns, I think, right?
Well, considering this has been passed by several people, I'm pretty sure it's already gone through that. But for anyone who needs to know, it says, number one, the presiding officer may bar anyone acting improperly from continuing to address the governing body. And, you know, usually that's if they are cussing or something, I would assume. Number two, while the governing body is in session, no person shall disturb...
Councilor Canna, where are you at?
I'm on page nine now of the Rio Rancho one. So, sorry about that. Number two, while the governing body is in session, no person shall disturb or cause a breach of peace pursuant to municipal code section 131-05, disturbing the peace, or delay or interrupt the proceedings of the governing body. Number three, electronic devices shall be kept on silent mode during the meeting. Number four, no signage, banners, posters, or props shall be held or displayed in the governing body chambers, overflow room, we don't have any of those, or the room where the meeting is occurring, if elsewhere, in the manner that blocks the view of others or creates a distraction from the business of the governing body. Number five, the director of the Department of Public Safety, the police, or their designee shall serve as a sergeant-at-arms. Number six, the director of the Department of Fire and Rescue or their designee shall enforce the room capacity ingress or regress of the room where the governing body is occurring. Because it says it's part of the municipal code section, I'm going to assume that they've already looked at any First Amendment issues. Because, I mean, they do have a whole department of lawyers that look at stuff before they pass them. But if our attorney wants to chime in...
Chime away.
So, the First Amendment, let me back that up. Business meetings of the council are exceptions to the First Amendment. So the First Amendment doesn't apply here except for the public input portion. That's why you don't have to take public comment, you don't have to listen. So it's not a First Amendment forum. Only the public input is. Doesn't mean you should ignore it, but...
I just want to confirm on that. So with the public input, with the procedure that we have between three minutes if it's really busy, I think, right now, five minutes if it's not too busy. The public input portion, that is going to be the window for individuals to have their free speech and express themselves. And they will not have to be subject then to the presiding officer may bar anyone acting improperly, which seems really vague?
Not true. The decorum rules don't apply to, First Amendment protects your content, what you're saying, not how you say it. So if someone's yelling or throwing things or being disruptive, you absolutely have the right to shut them down. It's like yelling fire in a theater. First Amendment right is not absolute, 100%. So you have the right to say what you want, but you have to say it in a manner that complies with the decorum of the established body.
I would guess my main concern is that this leaves it up to the chair of the meeting and what they decide is being proper, which could potentially get us in hot legal water versus this person gets three minutes, everyone gets their time. If they decide then, with talking about a controversial topic in our community, that that would be improper to talk about, regardless of what language they may be using, with fighting words, I believe, is some of the ones that we consider?
So, again, you're not regulating the content of what they're saying. So they can talk about any topic they want in the First Amendment, it's how they do it. Like, an example, the burning of the flag is a First Amendment right. I don't think that's appropriate in here for a variety of reasons, safety concerns. So even though it's a First Amendment right, you can say, yeah, we're not going to light stuff on fire in here. So you're not regulating the content, you're regulating the manner in which it's related.
I guess the reason I want to see something about public decorum is because I think it was two meetings ago, we were in the middle of having a debate between us and we had someone from the audience come to the podium, start giving us their opinion in the middle of what we were doing, and that wasn't the time because she had already had public comment. So to avoid things like that happening, I think there needs to be some kind of rules about you're not allowed to speak other than during public comment.
As she was going on, Chief Potillo was getting ready to get up and...
Yeah, but if the public already has this on the website or something and sees that, then, you know, they've already been told, it's already listed on the public that you're not allowed to do that, then it might be helpful.
And there's one other exception to the First Amendment exception, that's public hearings. So you know the public hearing, you're asking for public comment on that specific topic. Granted, it should be related to that topic and it's not a general First Amendment forum, but that's another public input opportunity on the topic. So I would call that a limited First Amendment forum.
I just want to check in a quick second. I mean, if Manny was expected to get up and bar a person for approaching the podium here for speaking out of turn and remove them from the room, is that the expectation if people break decorum?
To me, the expectation would be that the chair is using that gavel.
A color dog, out of order.
Yeah, to me, I mean, unless they're, you know, going to attack somebody, then of course the police have to get involved and do, you know, their normal thing.
Call out of order, then ask the police chief to...
I only bring this up just having had to review escalation of force procedure that we have in our local police public...
Yeah, I mean, I hope...
I just want to make sure then that...
I would hope that we never have a member of the public that needs to be tackled or something, you know? I mean, that would be terrible, but it could happen. So I'm sure, they're always aware, they're always watching. I mean, you saw as soon as there was a loud bang, they were ready, you know? So they're paying attention.
I just don't want to have Manny be on the public news for folks, you know?
Would you guys notice, just do it, you could cut that mic off too?
That's a good idea.
Remote.
Yeah, so whenever someone does inappropriate, you know?
You just shut their mic off, from that perspective.
Isn't there another button there? Isn't it for that? There used to be.
Yeah, right back here.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yes, Ben, it's safe.
Oh, see, you have it.
Good job. Yeah, maybe that's the way to go.
Just make sure, gavel, press the button.
Yes.
Physically restrain and drag people out of council.
So just give me the hook and then I'll be like, okay, good.
Cool, just trying to avoid some...
I mean, if we can't have it.
We learned a lot in that meeting because we've never had that before in almost 10 years that I've been mayor, that has never happened. And in the 10 years that I've been mayor, we've never had... And in the ten years that I've been mayor, we've never had confusion, except for this last couple of years, on the town council with issues, because we've all worked together, we've all respected each other's opinion, and we've tried to accommodate each other. And I do that, too. For example, do you know that none of you should be talking without being recognized by the chair? That not only goes for the council members, but it goes for members of the administration and everybody else. You first get recognized, and then you can speak, and you don't interrupt anyone while they're speaking, the presiding officer has the authority to do that. So I've been a little lax on that, I really have, because for the past eight years, we haven't had to have a firm set of rules that specifies every step of the way. Counselor Prince?
And just in the framework, governing body, first part of the packet over here, one of the, I admire how some of our committees run underneath 1.4 adopted rules. Item C, suspension of rules under general provisions, rules of procedure for governing bodies. Except for statutory or ordinance provisions, these rules or any part thereof may be temporarily suspended by a majority vote of counselors present. When the suspension of a rule is requested and no objection is offered, the presiding officer shall announce the rule suspended, and the governing body may proceed accordingly. I find that to be a really solid answer. When I see other committees and sometimes Robert's Rules, I will agree with Counselor McConville, it is very rigid and very procedural and not conversational, I think, in the ways that we also know each other socially and in the community here. Should there need to be a moment where keeping up with having to acknowledge every person if people are ready to listen and talk to one another, suspending Robert's Rules of Order for a discussion also, I believe, exists under this framework in ways that I think a lot of people would be more comfortable with.
Yeah, and I appreciate Counselor Snyder, you got this from the Municipal League?
Actually, the Planning and Zoning Chair, Simon Wheaton Smith, who's a parliamentarian, actually forwarded it to me and said, "This might be..."
Who was it?
Simon Wheaton Smith, the Chair of Planning and Zoning, actually forwarded it to me.
I spoke to Rebecca, I can't remember her last, Martinez, she's the parliamentarian for the Municipal League, and she said, "You want to try to keep it simple, you don't want to make it so restrictive that people are constantly arguing about points of order."
Right, right.
And I kind of like this document, I think it's a good starting point.
Yeah, I think it's very simple, and I think some, the other advantage of it, it's got some places here for like some housekeeping that's done prior to the meeting, such as, you know, where we're going to post and stuff, which we already know, but it would be in one document, and it has, you know, our timeframes in another spot, the timeframes of when things are going to get out and how soon it's going to be before the meeting, which we already know, we don't need to change, but it will actually be written down in one document that would allow us to follow that. So there's a lot of advantages of having, going through this document.
Counselor Prince?
I would then ask if this rules of procedure for governing bodies document feels like a good starting point. If there are any questions, concerns, or pre-council vote amendments, would the best process at that point be then to have each counselor only individually email Counselor Snyder with proposals to be integrated into it, or would that then be what we would want to bring up at a council meeting? I know we don't want to violate the Open Meetings Act, and we're not allowed to do a forum on that one. I'm just wondering where we're at right now, if we want to amend any document in front of us.
The best council meeting is one where you get in, you take care of business, and you get out.
Right.
You can make a council meeting go on and on and on while you're debating all these fine points. Counselor Connaught?
If we all email Counselor Snyder, that's a rolling quorum. The best bet would be for all of us to email our suggestions, our amendments and things to Clerk Saviel, and he will put together a packet for the next time we discuss this. That's the best way to do it, because then we don't violate the Open Meetings Act.
How does everybody like that?
I think that's a good idea. I'm wondering if, you know, yeah, I don't know how in detail we want to do, you know, if at the beginning, governing body of, do we want to put in town a Silver City now, or just assume that, you know, that we would get that in before it comes to us next? And, you know, there's a couple of things, you know, in here, it's talking about, we need to insert town clerk when they're talking about city clerk and this sort of thing, but you know, and then I, if here, you know, where it's under 1.1 meetings, date and time and place, do we want to get that in, or we know that what that is, the town clerk knows that, if he could just put that in for us?
Yeah, you know, I also think it's important that we have the attorney look at it to make sure that we're not making statements that might counter some ordinance that's in effect, which is a law. Now, you can change the law, but I think it's important to not go changing the laws until we can have a chance to discuss a draft. So, hang on just a minute, so, somebody make a suggestion on when we want to have this into Mr. Sadiya. And Mr. Sadiya, do you have an electronic copy of this, that Counselor Snyder?
Yes, I do.
Huh?
Yes, sir.
So if you would send everybody a copy of that, that way you can cut and paste what's here if you want to, or you can retype and come up with your own, it doesn't matter. This is not the Holy Grail, but it's kind of a starting point. Counselor Connaught?
I would suggest we have anything into him by November 7th, which is about 10 working business days from now. That gives him a week and a half to get it done by the next work session.
Okay.
Is that enough time for you?
Is that a good working time for you, Sadiya?
Unfortunately, I'd be in Albuquerque that first week of November and unable to work through that legislation. Would it be possible then to have that in by, I know it is Veterans Day observed, with the Wednesday, the 12th of November, before the 18th council session we'll be holding? Will that be enough time for you?
As long as it's simple, I can make the changes, yes.
That would work, I think.
Okay, Counselor Snyder?
Yeah, I just thought we might want to, so what we're thinking on 2.3 order of business, are we going to try to go then with the new format, I guess, that this procedure comes out with? Just for clarification.
Well, we've been using this format for a long time. We can change it, but it works.
I'm just asking, I'm just asking the question.
It works, you know? I don't think there's any need to reinvent the wheel. Okay. Counselor Prince?
I would just ask of Counselor Connaught, just because I also really respect the efforts of Southern Park, for the consent calendar and what that would take over in what our regular meeting agendas typically look like. The consent calendar would probably replace changes to the agenda?
And minutes and...
And minutes?
Yes.
And proclamations?
Yeah, and there's something else, and I can't remember what the fourth thing is that's on there.
The ceremonies?
Do they have payroll?
There we go.
Regular recurring things like that?
Yeah.
Budget transfers, that's another comment.
Which can also be removed if there's questions about budget.
Counselor Snyder?
And if we wanted a proclamation where we actually wanted to get up in front of the podium and thank the, whatever group it is, we could do that.
Yeah, the proclamation one is always good for when they don't show up, then you can just kind of, you know, have to, because sometimes they don't show up.
That's the way to go, yeah.
Yeah.
Makes sense, thank you.
Okay. Anybody have any parting comments? Everybody understand what's coming next. Mr. Sadiya, would you just give us an overview of what's coming up with regards to this?
Yeah, so we need to get all your changes. I will email you all the copy of this tomorrow, that way you'll have time to review it, and then just have it to me by what, well, I'll have to have enough time to finish it and then get it to Mr. Kretic so that he can review it as well, so...
So is it possible for us to give them to you by the 7th, and Counselor Prince to do it by the 12th? That might be...
Yeah, that's not how it works for you, but I just want to make sure I'm able to get it done so that Mr. Kretic can review it as well before we present it to you at council meeting.
Does that schedule work by Mr. Kretic?
It does. And I'd also, if I might have a couple of minutes, the Municipal Code one you're looking at was originally drafted by Randall Van Black when he was counsel for the Municipal League. He's now working with New Mexico Local Government Law. The Village of Corrales is the product of Randall Van Black, Randy Audio, and the collective wisdom of everyone, so the Village of Corrales has taken the Municipal League one, and with specific instances they've incurred, whoop, that one's covered. So you might look at the Village of Corrales, too, because it'll have additions or subtractions based on their actual experience in Corrales.
Thank you for that, that was an important thing to note. Any other comments? Oh, Counselor Prince?
Just the balance that I'm going to be looking towards between what we've got for the rules of procedure for governing bodies and what we've got for the Village of Corrales, we want the process of these council meetings to be approachable, especially by the public, by laypeople, for any elected official that comes in. We also need to have a parliamentary procedure that will prevent chaotic or overbearing or shutting down of any individuals once, so just making sure then that we can strike with that good balance is, that's going to be the primary goal that I'll be looking at this from. Thank you.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Counselor McConville?
I make a motion here, Judge.
The motion to adjourn, is there a second? Counselor Snyder? Any discussion? Hold those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are hereby adjourned, our council meeting starts at 6 o'clock.